I'd like to call a regular monthly board meeting to all, please. Mr. Felche, will you lead us in the prayer?
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for another productive and successful school year. As we wind down this week, we ask your blessings upon our students and staff as we dismiss for the summer. We are grateful for their hard work this school year, and we ask you reward those efforts with a restful summer. Please keep them safe as they travel and enjoy their time off, and return them to us safely in August. Thank you, Father, for our staff who went above and beyond in meeting their obligations to the children. We are certainly blessed with outstanding, caring educators and support staff, and for that, we are grateful for your grace. These things we pray in your name.
Ms. Egan, will you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Felche, can we do a roll call, please?
Mrs. Acevedo here. Mr. Campbell.
Here.
Dr. Craft. Mr. Egan.
Here.
Mr. Gaines.
Here.
Mrs. Daisart.
Here.
Mr. England.
Here.
Mrs. Lemoine.
Here.
Mr. Long.
Here.
Mr. Smith is not with us, and Ms. DeWoner.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Felche. I'd like to take a moment, if I'm not privileged, please, to have a moment of silence for Mr. Floyd Landry. He passed away. He was a former board member for the school board for many years, so, you know, I'll condone his praise, but he was a fine gentleman. Again, I'll condone his praise to Mr. Landry and the family, please. Okay. All right. At this time, we've got a public hearing on the 2018-2019 general fund and special revenue fund budgets. Is anybody against this, have any questions, or whatever?
Any comments?
If any comments, anything of that nature? If none?
Anything, Ms. Son? Anybody signed up?
Anybody signed up? Nobody here.
Okay. That being it?
Okay.
Close the public hearing.
Okay.
Good. Okay. Go up to item number five, community concerns. Ms. Benesak, nobody?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Benesak. Okay. Move on to item number six, motion to incorporate the May 8, 2018 general committee report into the minutes of the May regular monthly meeting.
So moved.
Got a motion by Mr. Warner.
Second.
Second by Ms. Daisart. Any questions or comments? Please cast your vote.
Motion passes ten zero.
Okay. Okay. Go on to item number seven, motion to approve the following minutes. Minutes of the regular monthly meeting of February 20, 2018, as published on April 6, 2018.
Come on. You're going to take a meat judge.
Yes, sir.
Well, we just sit over there.
Well, it's left at the board. You want me to just read them all, and we just do it at one? Okay, let's do it that way. All right. We've got minutes of the special meeting in March 13, 2018, as published on May 11, 2018. Minutes of the regular monthly meetings of March 27, 2018, as published on May 11, 2018. Minutes of the special meeting of April 10, 2018, as published on April 27, 2018. And the minutes of the special meeting of April 24, 2018, as published on May 11, 2018. And then the minutes of the regular monthly meeting of April 24, 2018, as published on May 11, 2018. There were a motion by Mr. Gaines.
Second.
Second by Dr. Craft. Any questions about these minutes? Any corrections? If not, please cast your vote.
Motion passes ten zero.
Item number eight, motion to approve the changes to the guide to student conduct of 2018-2019 school year. This was a recommendation by the committee. And good evening, Mr. Powell.
Good evening. I'm here because Mr. Gaines asked me to come back and report to the board on the suspensions of driver's license for students who have committed suspendable and expulsible nature incidents. The revised statute is thirty-two colon four thirty-one, and it talks about kids who have been suspended ten or more times for infractions, suspendable infractions. And those infractions are sale and possessions of drugs, alcohol, or illegal substances, possession of firearms, and assault and battery on faculty and staff. And the law states that the principal shall notify the Department of Public Safety and Correction and office of motor vehicle for any student between the age of fifteen and eighteen who has committed those infractions for which I just mentioned about. The motor vehicle will suspend a student's license for one year. Up on his eighteenth birthday, they will not do anything. The student can apply for a hardship license, provided he's going to treatment for alcohol or drugs or something like that. After six months, the principal can revoke the license, provided that the child has had good behavior in the school. So therefore, that is the driving suspension, and it's revised statute thirty-two colon four thirty-one. And that's what I'm reporting, because Mr. Gaines asked me to report on that and to have that placed in our guide to student conduct upon your recommendation.
Mr. Gaines, anything? So moved. We have a motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Ms. Acevedo. Any questions? Comments? Please cast your vote.
Motion passes ten zero.
Thank you, Mr. Powell.
You're welcome.
Okay. Move on to item number nine. Mr. Granberry, good evening, sir. Looked like you've been busy, Mr. Granberry.
Yeah.
Just a little. He's been doing nonstop of this.
Just a little.
How did the, um, the, um, the job fair? How did that go, Mr.?
Long.
It went very long.
Took it all the yellows.
And you look at the yellows, and you'll see how it went.
All right.
We hired a bunch of people.
That's fantastic. Hope they got some math teachers in there, do they?
Couple.
A couple.
We're all looking for math teachers. We're looking for science teachers. We're looking for special ed teachers, you know? Other than that, we're in great shape.
We're in good shape? Good. Glad to hear that, Mr. Powell.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions from Mr. Granberry? Um, Mr. Long?
Said we're in great shape with everything else. Bus drivers also.
Yeah. Julie, Julie Gagnaud seems to be happy with what's going on right now, so that keeps us happy.
Yeah, she's still in a bad place.
And we still have a bunch of openings for teachers that we're still working on. You know, we're in great shape, because we had a lot of openings. Now, we still have openings, but, you know, it's confined to basically math, science, and special ed right now.
Right. What about bilingual teachers? Do we have?
We can always use bilingual teachers. Yes, absolutely.
Well, we had a bunch of people that applied that were ESL certified but couldn't speak Spanish, which didn't help us out tremendously, because, you know, it doesn't help to have an ESL teacher, English as a second language teacher, who can't speak Spanish, you know, when we have an influx of Spanish students.
Right.
And parents.
And parents.
And, you know.
Okay. Okay. Any questions from Ms. Daisart?
Thank you, Mr. Granberry, for all your hard work, as always. And I see we have a lot of, quite a few of our former students on the personnel appointment list. Not only former students, but wonderful students and talented, and so it's wonderful that they are coming back to St. Bernard Parish as professionals. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Thank you, Mr. Granberry. Okay. Item number ten, 2018-2019 personnel appointments. Any questions?
That's just an update of everybody that's employed by us right now for the 2018-19
This is good. Very good, Mr. Granberry. Any questions from Mr. Granberry concerning this item? If not, thank you, Mr. Granberry. Okay. Item number eleven, motion to approve the 2018-2019 personal evaluation plan. This was a recommendation by the committee.
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Daisart, second by Mr. Long. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Long. This was a recommendation by the committee. Any questions from Mr. Granberry? If not, please cast your vote.
Motion passes ten zero.
Item number twelve, motion to approve the request for permission to mail letters of assurance. This was a recommendation by the committee. So moved by Mr. Campbell, second by Ms. Lemoine. Any questions? Please cast your vote.
Motion passes ten zero.
Thank you, Mr. Granberry. Okay. Item number thirteen, motion to approve the administration request to renew flood insurance. This was a recommendation by the committee. So moved by Mr. Long, second by Ms. Acevedo. Any questions? We do have the insurance people here tonight, so if you've got any questions, go for it. Thank you for coming, gentlemen, as far as that goes. Please cast your vote.
Motion passes ten zero.
Thank you. Okay. Let's see. Now, we move on to item number fourteen, adopt the 2018 avalanche milages. Let me go and read the resolution to be put into the minutes, and then we're going to take a roll call vote. Let it be resolved that the following milages are hereby levied on the 2018 tax rolls on all property subject to taxation by the St. Bernard Parish School Board. Milages: School Board District Constitutional Milage, three point eight three mils; School District Operational, nine point four four mils; School District Operationals, three point oh six mils; School District Operationals, nineteen point three nine mils; School District Maintenance, five point five mils. This is a total of forty-one point two two mils. Be it further resolved that this proper administrative offices of this parish of St. Bernard, State of Louisiana, be that they are hereby empowered, authorized, and directed to spread and set taxes as here above set forth upon the assessment rolls of said parish for the year 2018, to make this collection of the taxes imposed on behalf of the taxing authority according to the law, and that the taxes herein levied shall become a permanent lien and privilege on all property subject to taxation as herein set forth. And collection therefore shall be enforced by the manner provided by law. The foregoing resolution was read and followed. The roll call was called and adopted, therefore, and the resolution was adopted by following votes. So we're going to go with a roll call vote, yea, yea, and aye, absence, stains. Yes.
Just a clarification or a recertification that the mils, there are no increases in the mils.
That's correct. Yes, that's correct, Ms. Daisart.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Yea and aye. We're going to record a couple, Mr. Felche, we call a roll.
Yes. Ms. Acevedo?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yeah.
Dr. Craft?
Yeah.
Mr. Egan?
Yeah.
Mr. Gaines?
Yes.
Mrs. Daisart?
Yes.
Mr. England?
Yeah.
Mrs. Lemoine?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
And Ms. DeWoner?
Yeah.
Motion passes unanimously, ten zero.
Okay. A certification, I hereby certify this ongoing as a true and exact copy of the resolution adopted at the board meeting held on May 22, 2018, at which meeting a quorum was present in votum. St. Bernard Parish School Board, Parish of St. Bernard, Louisiana, on this 22nd day of May 2018.
Very good.
Thank you. Okay. Move on to item number fifteen, motion to approve the 2018-2019 general fund and special revenue fund budget. We just had the hearing on it, so...
I would move that we accept the 2018-19 general fund and special revenue budget.
Okay. Have a motion by Ms. Daisart, who's second, Ms., Dr. Craft.
Ms. Craft.
Okay. Any questions? Please cast your vote.
Motion passes ten zero.
Okay. Item sixteen, motion to approve the bid tabulation of milk and milk products for July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2018. This was a recommendation by the committee. Have a move, motion by Mr. Warner, second by Mr. Campbell. Like I said, it's a recommendation by the committee. Any questions? Please cast your vote.
Motion passes ten zero.
Item number seventeen, motion to approve the bid tabulation for bread and bread products for July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019. Have a motion by Dr. Craft, second by Mr. Gaines.
I'm sorry.
Any questions? Please cast your vote.
Motion passes ten zero.
Item eighteen, items to be placed on the agenda for next committee meeting. Any board members like to see anything on the agenda for the next meeting, please? Okay. Yes, Mr. Gaines.
More than a point of privilege is wanting to congratulate Ms. Felche on his successful speaking engagement at the Kiwanis Club this afternoon. We had a fair turnout for a summer meeting, well, it is summer now. I mean, the temperatures really attest to that. Anyway, but she gave a fine overview of our school system, and it was well received. Thank you, Ms. Felche.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Mr. Fernandez gave a very good report financially of his standing in the St. to the Rotary Club Thursday, and we're proud of him.
He always does a fine job, huh, Dr. Craft?
He does. He had a good math teacher.
That a boy gave.
He had a good math teacher.
That's good. And thank you for all your efforts. Ms. Felche?
Just a vote call. You didn't make a motion, and have a second. So just in an abundance of caution.
Okay. Okay. Well, abundance of caution, what we'd like to do is get a motion to approve the resolution, even though we had a roll call vote.
We did a roll call vote, but we didn't do a motion and a second prior to the roll call. So just in an abundance of caution.
Yeah, let's do it.
Let's do a motion and a second.
So moved.
Okay. By Dr. Craft? Second by Mr. Campbell? Okay.
About one for the year.
Mr. Daisart? All in favor?
Well, let's do the roll call vote, just in an abundance of caution, okay?
We got the motion.
Mrs. Acevedo?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yeah.
Dr. Craft?
Yeah.
Mr. Egan?
Yeah.
Mr. Gaines?
Yes.
Mrs. Daisart?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Ms. Felche. Just abundance of caution.
I think sometimes in a roll call vote, you may not need that, but just in case we're just...
I always thought that a roll call vote would suffice.
You're probably right.
We don't, some technicality to hold ourselves.
No, we don't want the technicality.
But the chair was overruled, so that's okay.
We have.
But that's okay. All right.
We'll have to check that out.
Okay. For next year.
Yeah, we got it covered. That would have been...
Okay. Item number nineteen, superintendent's recommendation. Ms. Felche?
Just a reminder to everyone, this is the last week of school. Actually, next week, as we're starting the summer, it's probably going to be our busiest time. Even though most of the students will not be attending our regular school sessions, this is when we do our planning and our training over the months of June and July. So many of our teachers don't see a break at all. They go straight into the training and the in-service. But being the last week of school tomorrow, we have several exit ceremonies. All of our kindergartners, our fifth graders, and our eighth graders will be participating in exit ceremonies. And the times may vary slightly, but usually our kindergartners are about 8:30. You need to obviously check the schools and their websites. The kindergarten ceremonies are usually around 8:30, followed by fifth graders around 10:30, and at 1:00 PM will be our eighth grade middle school ceremonies. High school exams are underway these last couple of days. The last day for students to actually be attending school will be Thursday, so after tomorrow. Our teachers will come back on Friday for records day, and that will be their last day. Our summer skills program starts next Wednesday, May 30, for those students who will be attending summer skills. And we also have, as we know, our Performing Arts Academy in the month of June. They will culminate, their activities will culminate in a performance of Into the Woods, which will be the last week in June and first in July. We also, for the first time, will be instituting a summer science camp at the Moma Center for the last two weeks in June. That information can be obtained on our website as well as calling the school board office. There is a fee associated with that to cover the cost of the summer camp. But I think it's going to be extremely exciting and beneficial for those students who opt into that. Those will be full days from eight to three for a week-long period, and there'll be two one-week sessions. I also want to mention that we had our high school graduation last week. This is a wonderful and accomplished class for approximately close to 450 graduates. These students earned thirteen and a half million dollars in scholarships. Two hundred seventy of them, which is sixty percent of the class, are exiting with college credit, varying from three hours through sometimes an associate degree, which is the equivalent of sixty credit hours. In fact, seven of our students received a high school diploma and concurrently, at the Nunez graduation ceremony, received their associate degree in applied science, which is the PTEC program, process technology. A couple of those are going on to a four-year degree in engineering and the sciences, and the bulk of those seven are going into the workforce into very high-paying jobs because of their PTEC certifications. An additional five of our high school graduates earned a certificate in technical studies in welding through Nunez. They'll be looking, they've got those industry-based credentials and certifications, and they'll be able to work into, or walk into, jobs in the welding arena. We have issued the first semester of this year over 130 industry-based certifications in the careers such as carpentry, electrical, HVAC, this process technology that we're talking about, certified nursing assistants, emergency responders, and a lot of the computer areas with computer web foundations and networking technicians. So that was only the first semester this year, and we're still accumulating and counting on how many of those industry-based certifications have been issued for the second semester. We had a national merit finalist in this class again for the fourth consecutive year, which is quite an accomplishment. We had a Posse scholarship winner, Posse Foundation scholarship winner, and this is about the fifth or sixth year in a row that we've had that, which also is quite an accomplishment. And in the performing arts arena, we had four of our students who were finalists in the prestigious Donald Wood statewide operatic competition. There were only two schools anywhere in the state that had more than one finalist. Those two schools were Shalman High School and NOCA. So I think we're in pretty good company with our Performing Arts Academy as well. So I just wanted to make mention of that to show what a wonderful class the class of 2018 has been and their academic accomplishments, their performing arts accomplishments. And we had athletic accomplishments also, but I just don't have them listed here. We had a couple of district winners and such. So I wanted to congratulate them and their parents and their families for just a wonderful graduation and a wonderful career here with us, and thank the parents for entrusting them, entrusting their education to us, and I think these students really get us proud, so...
My grandson Jonathan Putty, he graduated three years ago from Shalman High. He's been accepted into medical school, in New Orleans LSU Medical School. So he's on a roll there. Thanks for the public education you received all throughout St. Bernard Parish.
Wonderful. That's good.
Ms. Felche, can you make mention about our graduation rate? I think recently we had some news on that. We're above ninety percent?
Absolutely. We are. Shalman High School's cohort graduation rate was ninety-four percent. And district-wide, which includes Raleigh Alternative School, when you put all of our students together, our high school graduation rate is ninety-one percent. Which is an A-rated graduation rate by anybody's... And what that means for people who may not quite understand, it's four years ago, any student who entered ninth grade with us, or over the course of these four years, who transferred into our school and spent maybe only one day there. So anyone, any student who entered our high school within the past four years in this cohort, so if a student dropped out, if he didn't receive a standard diploma, went to get a GED, he counts in a negative way. If the student transferred out of state and we can't necessarily locate and verify, that again is counted against us. So that percentage graduation rate is really attributable to the very hard work of our high school faculties and administrators who have done an incredible job. So thank you, Mr. Warner. That is, you know, that is quite a high statistic, and we're one of the tops in the state on that.
Yeah, I just wanted to congratulate the administration and the staff for that, because that is phenomenal. I think we're in the top in this region.
Yes, we are.
And I remember not too long ago, it wasn't quite that high.
No, you're right. So they've done a monumental, we made a monumental effort and task in making sure that hopefully kids are coming to school, kids are learning, kids are achieving the credit, and which you have to also understand, they have to pass all high school exit exams as well, the end-of-course tests. And six of those courses or tests are given in the different subjects. So that means every one of those students met the bar for earning their Carnegie unit credit, but also passing their end-of-course tests. So it's very high graduation rate.
In addition, having the Ninth Grade Academy also.
Just a jump start.
Yes. Your recommendation years ago to have that Ninth Grade Academy has proven to be a big asset in holding on to those kids. Because at one time, we were losing them.
Yes.
At the ninth grade level.
Right. That was the year, like you're stating, Mr. Long, where they're most vulnerable. And if they can make that adjustment as a ninth grader and be successful in completing all of their courses, that is a major jump start for their, for kids who struggle. That's a major jump start for their academic career. And, you know, people talk about, we do have a large high school, but it's almost like two separate schools. So your Ninth Grade Academy, with those four to five hundred ninth graders, are really separate and apart, on different sides of the street. They intermingle at different times, but their core classes and everything is really isolated. We keep them... We keep them kind of together, and we have a very high success rate of getting those kids to earn the credits they need to, to be on their way to graduation, when they go to what they call the main side, the ten through twelve campus, so. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Ms. Daisor.
And I'd just like to take this opportunity also to thank Ms. Foche, all of our administration and teachers and staff, a wonderful two thousand seventeen, eighteen school year, and you mentioned all the wonderful accomplishments of our seniors who just graduated from Shellman High School, but I would ask you, Ms. Foche, if you could name some of the universities also that our students will be attending next year, most of which are, you know, many scholarships, thirteen and a half million dollars worth of scholarships, but if you could name some of those universities, I think it's just wonderfully impressive. And again, thanks to all of our faculties and staffs at each of the levels for a successful year. Just off the top of my head, Syracuse University in New York, Johns Hopkins, West Point, we had an appointment to West Point Military Academy.
Tell me how.
So many of those out-of-state universities that are prestigious in nature, and of course, in-state, you know, Tulane, Loyola, Xavier, UNO locally, and then LSU Southeastern, ULL, Louisiana Tech, so we've got, we're spreading out quite far geographically in the region and in the state, and, you know, sometimes it's really hard. Case Wesleyan, one of our students, yeah, so it's, and they're venturing out, you know, many times in this area of the country, kids tend to stay home, and we want to keep them home, but then we have groups of students who want to venture out beyond, and they have many, many opportunities at Shellman High. You know, when we talked about the scholarship winners and we talked about the college credit, as we've said before, the advanced placement courses that our students take, and they take a national exam to validate their learning, and if they score high enough on that national exam, they automatically are receiving college credit, which is recognized at any college in the country. And many of our students, we were named an advanced placement school of distinction because of the numbers of students who were not only taking the classes, but taking the advanced placement exams and scoring high enough to receive the credit. So many of our students get dual enrollment credit by actually attending a local college in conjunction with the high school, or going to Nunez, or going to one of the others in conjunction with high school, and others do it through the advanced placement courses and taking the national test, which would give them that particular credit. So we look at all avenues for kids to succeed and do well, so this class has been most impressive.
That's, okay. I'd like to just take this opportunity just to thank the parents that they just support public education, that's because that's where it starts at, at home, and then it comes here, and the administration, and Ms. Foche, and the teachers, they do such a wonderful job, and that's what it all comes down to. Dr. Kraft?
Also, we need to commend the students that put forth the effort during these four years and receive these high marks and scholarships that they got. We must attribute a great deal of effort on their part and commitment and dedication.
And, you know, just one other thing, you know, we're talking about the universities they're going to if they're taking that TOPS university pathway, but we've also talked about our career tech program. So many of our students are opting now for career placements in the career tech areas. The partnership with Nunez is exceptional. In fact, we have over three hundred students who have shown interest in the dual enrollment credits for next school year, so we're getting ready to meet with Nunez and talk about how can we accommodate all of these students and look at common times and those types of things, because the demand for them are increasing. So we're producing graduates not only going on to four-year universities, but are able to gain the skills necessary to walk out into a high-demand, high-paying job as well. And then we have students, and I want to make sure that we mention this as well, who have opted to go into the military and serve their country. You know, we've got a tremendous ROTC program at the high school, and many of our students have chosen that particular pathway. So whether it's a four-year university, a career tech career, coming in with some advanced training at Nunez, or the military, we have many, many different options for students so that they can satisfy all of their, what they think they may want to do in the future. So those pathways exist for every child at our high school.
Mr. Gaines?
I just wanted to mention also, we had an honors banquet at Shellman High School recently, and, you know, you said about four hundred fifty graduates, we had over a hundred, ten maybe, honor graduate, which was just like over twenty percent of the class in honors. That's an amazing accomplishment in itself, so graduate, certainly graduate Shellman High School and the staff.
And in order to be an honor graduate, we have now not only a minimum GPA of a three point three, but also a minimum ACT score of a twenty, so those students are eligible for TOPS funding, each and every one of them there, and they have maintained that level both academically in class and on nationally recognized assessments.
Yeah, Ms. Daisor?
One more thing. This class has also been very competitive. This year's class, and I think this is the only year, we had four valedictorians. That means they were all at the top of their class, tied, four valedictorians and two salutatorians. So they were very, very academically competitive also.
Very much so.
Thank you. You talk about athletes, physical athletes being competitive on the fields. These kids, you know, athletes have nothing on them in terms of competition. Their competition is just in a different arena, more of an academic arena as opposed to the athletic arena, but talk to some of them. They know what each other is doing, they know how they want to get ahead, they know how many advanced placement courses they need to take, and what they need to do to perform to reach excellence.
They jockeying around.
And they absolutely, very competitive in nature.
Mr. Long?
Also, Norris, you started out talking about the summer programs. I think I saw a memo where we're offering free breakfast and lunch.
The summer feeding, right. The programs, wherever we have a program in existence, our summer skills programs are housed at the ninth grade academy at Shellman High School, the middle and high school students, and at Davies for the elementary students. So we have applied and been funded for, I hate to, we talked about this, some feeding program, sounds so weird, but that's what they call it. So the students will have free of charge breakfast and lunch provided, and we've been able to piggyback the Performing Arts Academy kids, because it's right there on that campus, and we have applied for our summer science camp, so those, the students going to that camp will have lunch available to them as well, as part of their program.
Anyone else? Okay. Move on to item number twenty, join me? Have Mr. Campbell make your motion, second by Ms. Acevedo. All in favor? Just be able to join. Good night, everyone, and have a good summer.